On our agenda this evening, approval of our minutes from July 31st, a joint meeting with council, as well as our public hearing on the provisions to the proposed revisions to the unified development ordinance that was held back in October 1st. And then we'll review a land edition flat on Burnett Ridge and then have some further discussion on the questions, the commentary that happened during the public hearing on October 1st. So with that, if you would like to review the meeting minutes from July 31st and let city staff know if there's any requests of edits.
I'll second.
For July 31st? We have a motion to approve and a second for approval of the meeting minutes from the joint council, complaining commission meeting on July 31st. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Next up is the meeting minutes from the public hearing on the proposed revisions to the unified development ordinance on October 1st. Please take a few minutes to review those. Includes the minutes include the recording of the public commenting questions as well as some of the responses that were provided by the city staff at the meeting.
For approval of the minutes from the October 1st, 2024 meeting as drafted.
I second.
Any other questions or revisions? Okay, we have a first and a second for approval of the meeting minutes from the October 1st public hearing on the UDO revision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up is a review of a land edition flat at 179 Burnett Ridge. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Yeah, so this is a rather simple request. Last year, there was a lot division that took place across from Lester Lane. And the homeowner wanted just a little more room and the owner of the larger parcel said sure. So they were just asking for a little more room and this is essentially being added from the larger parcel to the parcel that was subdivided about a year ago for Joel and Emily Bailey. So we did review all the legal description, seems to all match and is in conformance with our subdivision regulations.
So is land edition going from Bilal to Daley?
Correct.
Okay.
Then once again, it's just expanding that lot that was created about a year ago, just give them a little more room.
Right.
Based on my review of the land edition flat, it seems to conform to the KRS 322 requirements for a land edition flat. I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the recommended flat at 179 Burnett Ridge. All in favor. Or we have a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So next up, we have discussion on the proposed, well, discussion on the October 1st public hearing for the recommendations for revisions to the unified development ordinance. Some of you that are in the audience may or may not have been at our public meeting on, or our public hearing on October 1st. For the discussion this evening on fighting commission members and city staff are based on the testimony that occurred at that meeting. And then this evening, we'll discuss, you know, our findings and our thoughts based on the testimony that was done at that meeting as well as meetings prior to that. And then we will determine if we will make a recommendation to city council for the proposed revisions as they are, or make any revisions to the proposed draft. That will be forwarded to city council. City council will take that process up over the next couple of months, assuming we make that recommendation. And they will do a reading, a first and second reading of that ordinance, just like it would be any other city ordinance. And at that time, they will also be able to take public comments, not necessarily to change our, change our recommendation, but you will be able to go to those meetings as well. This evening, if you have any other comments outside of the content of the draft revisions to the zoning ordinance, you're welcome to do so, but we can't take any further testimony or questions about the content of the zoning ordinance this evening. So with that, before we get started with the presentation, if you have any comments.
It's non additional testimony, we don't go toe to toe anymore, right?
Sorry?
I mean, I was just thinking we probably won't.
Yeah, follow this.
And I didn't understand what you just said. Did you say it can't be any additional?
Not of the content of the, of the, because that was, that was, all the testimony was taken during the meeting.
We may have used you for another event and kind of.
It's right here.
Thank you. But if you have any general questions or comments, you can.
Yeah, I mean, we referred to what comments were said, that's what we were looking at right?
We're gonna, yeah, we'll discuss the comments and questions that were raised at the public hearing.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Joan Ferris, 66 Burning Lane. On October 1st, the meeting that you were just talking about, I addressed the board, this board, and commented that the door remains open for any rules or any restriction, restriction hidden between the cracks in its UDO to be overlooked on the very whim of someone in power. This is my, this is word for word what I said, so it's no new testimony. Problem is, they don't get caught until the damage has been done. I stand by, unquote, I stand by this statement. On a whim, today I glanced online at parts 1, 2, and 3 of the proposed UDO. The term waiver is mentioned 138 times, the word appeal 103 times. Case closed.
Is this when we can all talk or that we wait till the end?
No, no, you can talk, but like I said, we can't consider any new testimony regarding the content of the UDO.
Let me ask a question. If something was said during that meeting, that was not.
Clarification?
That was not.
I don't think we should be taking any of this.
Well, that's what we were told, Tim, that's not.
We were told, we were told that we could come back here, get the last meeting and have any additional questions resolved. And I think that there was something said that was not accurate, so there just needs to be a clarification and that's it.
In terms of, in terms of testimony at the hearing, we can't read it because it's testimony at the hearing, but if you have a general question, we can answer a general question.
But this, this is pertaining, I'll come up now. We've been told so many different things, we don't know, so.
My name is Sharon McKnight, I'm at 62 Miller Lane. During the October 1st public hearing on the UDO, Ms. Rogers mentioned that a community member at a previous Phase 2 draft meeting, he had requested maximum setbacks for all R1B and R1C zones. When asked about the origin of the maximum setback, she stated that she wasn't exactly sure which meeting, but I was able to locate that video recording, which took place on January 18, 23. So am I allowed to go into that here?
Well, we.
To explain where the community feedback was coming from, because it wasn't coming from a community member at that meeting.
I mean, they can just, we get the information that the city can provide for our consideration of that, can, they can provide that too. It's, I guess, to some degree, we're really just dealing with the text that's in the amendment, not necessarily the source of why it is the way it is.
Well, isn't that the most important thing, the community input? I mean, that's what I'm trying, the reason why this is so important, because I located at the 118, 2023 meeting. And the reason why this is so important, this is the first meeting that was done after the pause on these proposed zone changes, okay? So you had from August of 2022 until January 18th of 23 with no community input whatsoever. The input was going to start at this meeting, this 118, 23 meeting that we all attended. And there was five of us, five or six, and the community member that Elisa said was where this maximum setback came from, it came from community members who had mentioned it prior to her to that meeting. It did not come from that meeting. The January 18th meeting was meant to gather community feedback and encourage active participation in the process. Unfortunately, this did not occur. Elisa presented a 55-page Phase 2 draft document that was created during the pause without any genuine input from the community, and this document was not given to the public ahead of this meeting. During this meeting, she introduced the idea of maximum setbacks for all residential properties, not just the R1Bs, but all of them, okay? She explained that this change was based on feedback from a few community members who were not present at the meeting, but had shared their concerns with her earlier. What do you mean earlier? Because there was a pause, so they felt that a recently rebuilt house did not align with the others in the area and disrupted the site line, okay? So this raises important questions. Who were these community members and why aren't they participating in these meetings alongside all of us? You know, I mean, this is what we were addressing here, who were these people? I mean, if you want community input, you should tell us where the community input's coming from. Like, for example, this came from.
Let me just interject for a second. So there's been, there was input into this process from starting in 2021.
Oh, yeah.
So we were able to, so just procedurally, input from the beginning of the process in 2021 through 2022, through the pause, and then continuing in 2023. We don't, we didn't start over essentially with the public input in 2023. It included, it included dialogue that happened prior to that time. But we, but I guess just to point out, we were aware of your question from last month or from a couple of weeks ago, and we were going to discuss that this evening.
Okay, well, that's fine. And let me.
So it ultimately doesn't really matter how it came to be.
Okay, well, that's fine. But so the reason why the, the whole process was paused is because of that very reason. I mean, it raised concerns of lack of transparency, poor communication, the complexity of the proposed changes, and the absence of genuine input. We actually show up to tell you our feedback, but when we're competing with people that we don't even know, now, it would make sense if she said, well, this came from this meeting, this conversation, or this came from this focus group, or this came from this survey. We were just told a few community, community members requested that. So that leaves us all a little bamp, that's all. And about this maximum setback, I have a big front yard, all the kids play in it, I'd rather have them in my yard and not out in the street. It should just be left alone.
We understand.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. Thanks.
Are there any other comments before we begin our discussion? With that, Elisa Duffy will provide a presentation as a follow-up to the public hearing.
Thank you for having Frank and I here this evening. Can everybody hear me okay? As usual, if I start fading and you have trouble hearing, please raise your hand. I will start my presentation by reviewing the zoning and subdivision ordinance update process, followed by facilitated discussion on some of the issues raised at the October 1 public hearing, and then we will end with potential next steps. The zoning and subdivision ordinance update process was proposed, progressed in roughly four phases, but we did have a brief scoping phase in late 2021. The first phase of the project began in November of 21, and this phase included an analysis of existing conditions, both of the built environment within Fort Thomas, as well as a thorough examination of both the zoning and subdivision ordinances. At the end of this phase, we produced a diagnostic report of our findings, recommendations, that we, and that was reviewed with the planning commission in January and February of 2022, and that diagnostic report is on the city's website. In Phase 2, we created the revised regulations, and all of the Phase 2 drafts were compiled into a single document, and that is also on the city's website. This phase 3 draft shows how the updated zoning regulations differ from your existing regulations. And the Phase 3 of the update began in January of '24 and concluded in April of this year. On January 11th, we provided a draft of proposed amendments. This Phase 3 draft of revised zoning and subdivision ordinance is also available on the city's website. We are currently in Phase 4, which began in May. On May 6th, we delivered the first edition of the Phase 4 draft. The Phase 4 includes the adoption process for revised zoning and subdivision ordinances. During this Phase 4, the planning commission and the city council met together several times, and the city council also had two work sessions. We delivered a second edition of the Phase 4 draft on August 28th that incorporated some requested changes that we heard from May through July of this year. Several major topics of discussion rose at the public hearing, including the inclusion of Green Street in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District, the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, and the maximum front setbacks in the R1B and the R1C zoning district. Following these discussion items, we can discuss any other topics that the planning commission may bear attention after hearing the comments and questions at the public Several community members spoke about the creation of the Tower Park Historic Overlay District, specifically the inclusion of Green Street. Two primary questions arose out of their comments. First, whether or not Green Street should be in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District. And for Green and Pearson Streets, should only alterations to the front of homes be subject to review by the design review board? Or should all sides that are visible from a public and private roadway and public property also be reviewed by the design review board? Several property owners asked that Green Street not be included in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District. One property owner felt that applying historic overlay district would increase his homeowner's insurance. It should be noted that the 1992 declaration for Green Street stated, and I'm just going to repeat this verbatim, owners should repair, maintain, and use the units in a manner which will preserve and protect and be consistent with the historic and architectural features of the exterior of the buildings. So the property owners today have some responsibility to only alter their homes in a manner that is consistent with its historic nature. Nonetheless, the question remains, should Green Street be included in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District? You can take a step further back if you would like and discuss the creation of the entire Tower Park Historic Overlay District and determine whether or not you think that's appropriate. Or perhaps, as suggested, that be only the design, someone also suggested in that meeting that we have only a design overlay district rather than a historic overlay district for Tower Park. And that is the suggestion that was also made on the first. I should point out that changing the nature of the district from a historic district to a design overlay district would require the city to re-notice property owners and hold another public hearing. So the first question in front of you is, should you include Green Street in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District?
So right now, they're stricter than.
I can't hear you.
Oh, your, your mic is down.
So right now, their, their ordinance, or what they have written, is stricter than Pearson and Alexander Circle, right?
Well, I'm going to say that it's stricter. It just simply has those words in it.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So the deed restriction that's there, who can enforce that?
So that's part of the issue right now. So the city is, basically is listed as the developer in those CCNRs, and the city has the authority to review any alterations that happen to those homes under that CCNR. However, the enforcement mechanism is lacking, which was one of the issues that some community members brought forward during their coffee and conversation sessions and saying, you know, if we continue the path that we're on, it's difficult for the city to enforce because of how that restriction is placed on the property in a CCNR versus in an overlay district.
And there's no permitting required for that? The review is all amper the fact?
No, so that it goes to the city, and when I say the city, I mean Kevin and Mark right now. So if someone, for example, wants to change the spindles on their front porch on Green Street or Pearson Street, they have to request permission from the city, which in this case is Kevin and Mark. So it doesn't go before any order or design review board, it simply goes to city staff.
Didn't we hear something about people changing windows or something that did not, you know, arguably did not meet historic standards? I just wondered, I mean, are all those things, things that need to be reviewed under the existing?
So I believe, but I could be mistaken, that that comment was made in relation to the homes that are on Alexander Circle.
Could have been, yeah.
But yes, if you are going to change the windows, if you're going to do those things, then you are going to have to request permission from the city, as it's currently in place.
There is a home on Green Street that I noticed has glass block windows, which I'm sure never went through any kind of review process because they didn't have glass block windows in the 1880s. I think, I think the issue is, you know, one, one person said they had an HOA and it worked really well, but HOAs are kind of transitory. Sometimes they work well, sometimes they don't. The fact that we have an HOA now doesn't mean we'll have an HOA in the future, which bears out because one of them disbanded. So it makes sense to me that we have an overlay district on all three of those properties, just so we have some kind of enforcement activity. So someone doesn't put in glass block windows without, you know, some kind of overview on it. The deed restrictions, they might be on the deed, but there's, unless someone says, hey, you can't do that after the fact, then we got a big fight up on our hands because no one's going to want to take their glass block windows out after they paid for them. So I think it makes sense for all of those properties to have an overlay district, just so we can maintain the, the historic nature of those proactively.
So Kevin, like today, currently, for any of the three streets, whether it's Pearson or Green or Alexander Circle, if somebody's wanting, wants to make an exterior alteration, you know, alteration of the building, in the building permitting process, how are the deed restrictions addressed?
Typically, it would come, the language, a lot of the language, it's separate from each area, but Alexander Circle, it goes to our designer review board, they ask for their request, it goes to the designer review board. What this does, another aspect of what this does is it creates consistency between all districts, because, you know, this, this, the Alexander Circle, they essentially had to go to the designer review board, the others did not. And the fact that the HOA at Pearson Street is in the process of dissolving, then it creates another layer of perhaps lack of knowledge of what they need to do. So we're trying to get this in the document that everybody kind of knows what's going on, and, you know, even a realtor or something like that can reference something easily that they can see and feel it. But they're supposed to come to us, and unfortunately, things happen, you know, not only there, but everywhere throughout the city without permits. And it's, it's that consistency that I think is going to be easier to enforce from our perspective moving forward.
Do the people that live on those three areas agree in some, some way to control the look, if you would? Or is there some people that just want to do whatever they want to do in their own?
Well, there's regulations in there, and obviously, everybody has personal preferences. So there are some small intricacies that we've had Wes, our historical consultant, contribute to and discuss, very minor minimal things that aren't really regulated by that document that one person might see as not historic or doesn't belong, that's really not regulated. So there's, there's several levels of that, that may or may not be fully enforceable. But no, absolutely not. Not everybody buys a historical home, not only wants to keep it that way, but maybe in some cases has financial issues with, you know, keeping it in that, you know, same form.
But they know there's some control.
They should. I mean, that's not, you know, it's kind of like all of us, you know, we sign a bunch of documents and they're closing, and how many of them do we read?
That's how you control it. But I mean, like people in Pearson, they HOA once ago, they busted off of Green Street for some reason, I don't know how they even did that. Other people in Pearson that want to paint their house white or gray.
That they need to come to us. And if we see something, we stop them and try to stop them, but a lot of those things happen over the weekend, and then we've got to go back and have those discussions later. So it's, it's kind of like, once again, throughout the entire city, other regulations, somebody builds a deck, somebody puts a pole in, hey, you did this without permit, we've got to go back and follow up and do our new diligence stuff.
We combine the four, four communities that control.
You know, once again, I think.
It's not like buying a house.
Well, one would think, but, you know, once again, I think that this, this creates that consistency that we.
Yeah, I agree with you that we need to wind it up, and there are some people who say, hell no, I don't want anybody controlling.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess I have a couple of questions. So one, and this was brought up at the public hearing and it's been brought up in several meetings, I think. What is the role of Wes with the designer review board? I mean, does he, does the city retain him to be a consultant, literally as a consultant, but I mean, to provide advice to the designer review board in just for historic issues?
Yes, and in some of those cases, you know, we're, we're in all likelihood going to defer to Wes, but there may be some instances where we make an administrative decision because it's simple, it's clean, it's easy, we may not call him for every individual.
But if, but if an alteration goes to the designer review board, he would be there to provide advice, technical advice?
Generally, you know, we, we ask him for a report, and he may or may not be at all the meetings. The report, in many cases, they're rather simple or easy issues, and we rely on our report. And once again, even beyond that, depending on the language and the specifics of what the request is, ultimately, you know, we may perform an administrative decision and may not involve Wes. But in most instances, we're probably going to err on the side of caution and.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a, if there's a issue of a prefer or a disissue, right?
Yeah.
If you have, lose the ability to have, you would have the ability for him to provide input.
Absolutely.
And I guess the other question I had is just, going back to the deed restriction part of it, was the enforcement of the deed restrictions part of the commitment that the city made when they acquired the property from the VA initially? I would have thought that would be part of that process.
It's my understanding that, so there is an administrative review, and I think it was always, you know, there really hasn't been, until more recently, there really hasn't been a lot of. there really hasn't been, until more recently, there really hasn't been a lot of, lot of issues. And I think before, they kind of all went to Mr. Dill as the administrator at the time and kind of really weren't discussed. It talked about city administrator, you know, evaluation, I think in there. And so we'd like to expand that, obviously, and have more oversight, you know, through the, through Mr. Cunningham.
To make a systematic.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
There was some, there was some common comment on whether it's just the front of these buildings or the back of the buildings. It seems to me the deed restriction talks about exterior. Is that correct? So, I mean, there is no front or back, it's all sides of the building, all the way around the roof, you know, all the architectural features.
I believe it is. You know, I think the discussion was the prominence of Green Street versus the front and back of those. But the back of those both have prominent views from, to the, to the park, the playground, I should say, and the armory building. So those are prominent all the way around.
The deed restrictions didn't just talk about one side of the building, right? It talked about all sides of the building.
So the deed restrictions for Green Street just say, shall, will preserve, protect, and be consistent with historic and architecture features of the exterior of the buildings. That's what the ones for Green Street say.
They restored the outside of the buildings and that shouldn't really be an issue.
So they, when the two split, the language split as well, which is part of the reason that we are looking to do this as a compelling interest so that we have the same set of standards that is followed for all of them.
Right, but the deed restrictions, I think, would be similar.
Probably. And if you need me to look that up, I can at some other slide.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying, even for Alexander Circle, the deed, so are there deed restrictions on Alexander Circle?
So Alexander Circle is different because when the, when the city took it over, for some reason, and I've not been able to figure out why, Chapter 36, because of ordinances, was actually amended to say precisely what had to be reviewed whenever there was a change on Alexander Circle. And it says that there's a set of guidelines that have to be followed and they follow the Secretary of Interior Standards for the rehabilitation and it goes to the design review board. So why was that chapter was specifically amended when it happened? And why specific guidelines were developed at that time, I don't know. But at that time, that's what happened. And so just a little bit of clarification. So Green and Pearson Street, as the overlay is currently drafted, would both use Secretary of Interior Standards. But because Chapter 36 is still in place, those on Alexander Circle will have both the Secretary of Interior Standards and the design guidelines that were put in place by the VA prior to the city taking them. So there will be that slight wrinkle for, so there will be additional standards on top of the Secretary of Standards for Alexander Circle.
But you would think that the VA, I don't know this for sure, but would the VA's design guidelines be consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards?
So the difference is, the standards that are, the guidelines that are being used for Alexander Circle are very detailed. As the Secretary of Interior Standards are much more general. And so that is the difference.
But those originated with the VA?
They were originated, I believe, with the VA, but are now a part of what has to be reviewed whenever anything happens on Alexander Circle because they are specifically listed in Chapter 36 of the city's cover ordinances. And I realize that I'm being extremely pedantic, but I'm just trying to raise a clarification, so I apologize for that.
What are the major things that are different between those three? And the control, what do you want to put on the side or are they?
Currently or in the draft?
As they stand right now, I guess, where they started originally. Pearson and Green look the same, right?
So originally, they were both under one HOA in 1992 and then they split.
I mean, they got to have the same roof, they got to have the same brick. When did construction begin the issue, right?
Well, so when they split, the standard published in review Pearson Street changed. And at that point in time, the reference, they have to be consistent with Kentucky Historical Society or Heritage or something.
Sure.
That's a control.
But the wording that they used doesn't exist. And it didn't exist then and it doesn't exist now.
What physically looks different between the two?
Oh, physically looks different?
Yeah.
Well, there are attachments on Green Street, there aren't attachments on Pearson Street.
But they were there originally?
They were that way originally. Units on Pearson Street are somewhat smaller, even though there are attachments on Green. I don't know, I have not looked closely enough about them to tell you whether or not they were both constructed at the same time.
I mean, the city put the same roofs on them and they did all the outside.
They did all the outside. The owners and hold another public hearing. So the first question in front of you is, should you include Green Street in the Tower Park Historic Overlay District?
So right now, they're stricter than others.
I can't hear you.
Oh, your, your mic is young.
So right now, their, their ordinance or what they had written is stricter than Pearson and Alexander Circle, right?
Well, I'm going to say that it's stricter. It just simply has those words in it.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the deed restriction that's there, who can enforce that?
So that's part of the issue right now. So the city is basically listed as the developer in those CCNRs. The city has the authority to review any alterations that happen to those homes under that CCNR. However, the enforcement mechanism is lacking, which was one of the issues that some community members brought forward during our coffee and conversation sessions and saying, you know, if we continue the path that we're on, it's difficult for the city to enforce because of how that restriction is placed on the property in a CCNR versus in an overlay district.
And there's no permitting required for that? The review is all after the fact?
No, so that it goes to the city. And when I say the city, I mean Kevin and Mark right now. So if someone, for example, wants to change the spindles on their front porch on Green Street or Pearson Street, they have to request permission from the city, which in this case is Kevin and Mark. So it doesn't go before any order or design review order, it simply goes to city staff.
Didn't we hear something about people changing windows or something that did not, arguably did not need historic standards? I just wondered, I mean, are all those things, things that need to be reviewed under the existing language?
So I believe that I could be mistaken, that that comment was made in relation to the homes that are on Alexander Circle.
Could have been, yeah.
But yes, if you are going to change the windows, if you're going to do those things, then you are going to have to request permission from the city as it's currently in place.
There is a home on Green Street that I noticed has glass block windows, which I'm sure never went through any kind of review process because they didn't have glass block windows in the 1880s. I think, I think the issue is, you know, one, one person said they had an HOA and it worked really well. But HOAs are kind of transitory. Sometimes they work well, sometimes they don't. The fact that we have an HOA now doesn't mean we'll have an HOA in the future, which bears out because one of them disbanded. So it makes sense to me that we have an overlay district on all three of those properties just so we have some kind of enforcement activity. So someone doesn't put in glass block windows without, you know, some kind of overview on it. The deed restrictions, they might be on the deed, but there's, unless someone says, hey, you can't do that after the fact, then we got a big fight up on our hands because no one's going to want to take their glass block windows out after they paid for them. So I think it makes sense for all of those properties to have an overlay district just so we can maintain the historic nature of those proactively.
So Kevin, like today, currently, for any of the three streets, whether it's Pearson or Green or Alexander Circle, if somebody wants to make an exterior alteration, you know, alteration of the building in the building permitting process, how are the deed restrictions addressed?
Typically, it would come, the language, a lot of the language, it's separate from each area, but Alexander Circle, it goes to our designer board. They ask for the request, it goes to the designer review board. What this does, another aspect of what this does is it creates consistency between all districts. Because, you know, this, this, the Alexander Circle, they essentially had to go to the designer review board, the others did not. And the fact that the HOA at Pearson Street is in the process of dissolving, then it creates another layer of perhaps lack of knowledge of what they need to do. So we're trying to get this in the document that everybody kind of knows what's going on and, you know, even a realtor or something like that can reference something easily that they can see and feel it. But they're supposed to come to us and unfortunately, things happen, you know, not only there, but everywhere throughout the city without permits. And it's that consistency that I think is going to be easier to enforce from our perspective moving forward.
Do the people that live on those three areas agree that needs some, some way to control the look, if you would? Or is there some people that just want to do whatever they want to do in their own?
Well, there's regulations in there and obviously, everybody has personal preferences. So there are some small intricacies that we've had Wes, our historical consultant, contribute to and discuss very minor minimal things that aren't really regulated by that document that one person might see as not historic or doesn't belong, that's really not regulated. So there's several levels of that that may or may not be fully enforceable, but no, absolutely not.
In addition to the standards for Alexander Circle, will be looked at using Secretary of Interior Standards?
I got a question. So many Green Street want to replace their windows, insulated windows, single pane windows they have now. Would they be able to do that?
So that would be up to the designer board. I mean, that is their problem.
Generally, if the profile of the windows and the sash looks the same, they'll let you do that. Are we all in agreement? I think we're all in agreement. The overlay is a good thing. Yeah, I think the overlay is a good thing. The only thing that I, and I have some sympathy for the request for, I guess, the rear facade or the other facade that aren't facing the right of way. You know, the, like on Green, the rear of the houses that face the playground, to some degree, that was all screened until the city took out all the trees. And the property owners didn't ask for the city to put a playground there back, they already tied there. So I have some empathy, I guess, because I guess I'm not committed one way or the other, but I have some empathy for the street-facing facade versus the rear of the houses because you could make the argument, well, the rear of the houses back on Alexander Circle, where they built the new modern garages that aren't historically accurate in any way, really. It's hard to make that argument like, well, how come their rear yard can be whatever? And we're the same historic district and, you know, ours has to be. So I have some sympathy for that position.
But the rear yard of Green, or the rear elevation of Green Street is actually more prominent.
I get that, but what would they want to do in Green Street in the back? But they're bad here. Did they have garages on there one time?
I don't believe so. I'm not aware of any garages that were there. I think they're.
They're pretty empty, but.
Well, that's just, if you look at the scope of what is there, it doesn't seem like there would have been any additional structures there. You would see some remnants of a couple of garages that have been there, but there was an access road behind it. So I don't know that there's any, was anything else there?
Yeah, I mean, if they would have been there, they would have probably been similar to what were the officer's houses, you know, set for your horse, you know. So. Like the rest of you right now, with their, their back in the back. It's just a little porch against them and actually have that where they sit, which I think that's not right because you got Alvin and where they have.
Well, once again, that's the footprint of their property. You know, they're pretty much footprint, so there's not a whole lot that you can do to expand on those significantly, you know, without. And there's, you know, we've talked to Wes about that. There was a recent issue there and he was fine with a minimal expansion on those. But, but once again, you get too far out, you're getting outside the footprint of what is, you know, property. Unless they, unless they do something different with that, you know, property lines or something else, I think that's part of it.
Maybe they face the park, the park sees them, they need to stay. They can't, they can't make all the decisions. Stay, we see it. And on the side of the armory, you see that backside too. I understand what they're saying and I do have sympathy for them. And again, that's where they're in that fishbowl, where everyone sees both sides all around.
Well, and if the deed restriction at the beginning said the exterior, it is what it is.
It is, that's correct.
It's everything. I would say we're having applied to everything.
So retain it as it is. So is there any other discussion on Tower Park before we move on to the next topic?
I guess, were there any other unresolved questions or issues that came up? I don't recall any.
Those are the ones that I marked down, so y'all have, did y'all remember anything else? So we had several property owners who spoke about proposing Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District. Some commentators asked why to create the district at all. Others asked why should their property owners on the avenue have stricter requirements that other, you know, residents within the city? And then other community members asked why multifamily units were not included in the district. So these were the questions that I marked down for you to consider. Should we retain the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District? Should we change the applicability? Should we modify any of the regulations? And should we modify any of the regulations applicable to the R3 properties on Fort Thomas Avenue? And if you don't mind, I'm going to remind you of a few of the particulars that are all on the same page when we have this discussion. So as you know, the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District is a zoning overlay district dedicated to the protection of the traditional development patterns and neighborhood character along Fort Thomas Avenue. The regulations promote the continuity of the existing built environment and speech reduces conflict between new construction and the existing development as it relates to the single family and two-family development. That was the intent when we originally started drafting this district. This district applies to parcels that are occupied by single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, and residential care facilities for persons with disabilities. So no matter what the property is zoned, if it has any of those uses on it, it was included in the overlay district. Only some modifications will be subject to these regulations, all new construction, no matter what it is, and then substantial additions. And a substantial addition means any modification to the principal building facade, if it is parallel or approximately thereto to Fort Thomas Avenue, other than routine maintenance. So if you paint your house, you don't have to come, you're not necessarily applicable to this. It's all reviewed by the design administrator unless you want a deviation and then it goes to the design review board.
So just real quick, just on that, so like, so if somebody wants to paint their, paint their house?
Yep.
That doesn't necessarily go to Kevin?
Doesn't go to anybody.
Right.
Unless there's something happening that would require them to get a building permit. But again, unless they're going to be impacting some of these regulations, it doesn't matter.
So any maintenance that's not a substantial alteration, that doesn't affect anything?
Right. But again, I'm going to point this out because when we originally started doing this, if the parcel was fronting on the side street, for example, then it wasn't included in the overlay district. When council had their discussion, they said, we still think even if it fronts on the side street but has a side on Fort Thomas Avenue, that facade needs to be regulated. So that was added back in vague, I believe. Because the district applies to single-family and two-family dwellings, the regulations are tailored to those types of units. The overlay district regulations include a very tight regulation of the front setback. We regulate the placement of detached and detached garages, the placement of carports, the roof design, the building alteration, building orientation. We completely prohibit enclosing front porches, including screens. We directly say that there has to be transparency, meaning windows and doors that you can see through. And then we also regulate the placement of solar energy systems or solar panels. So some community members asked, if we're going through this update process, how come the multifamily properties were not included in the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District? There were a couple of different reasons. As I said, the district was originally designed to protect single-family and two-family character of the avenue. As the discussions about the district continued through the update process, we did add additional standards for those R3 properties that are located on Fort Thomas. Because the design of many. Because the design of many of those buildings are very different than single-family homes, when we initially had the discussion here, these were the items that we're talking about regulating. So as it's currently drafted, R3 properties along the avenue must have an entrance facing Fort Thomas Avenue, they have to have a connection, connection to the sidewalk is required, they have to have transparent materials, meaning windows and doors facing the avenue, therefore that can't turn the building to the back and face the parking lot. And then the front setback must be within 3D, the average of the front setback along the avenue. And so you can see from the two pictures on the slide, how very different many of those existing R3 buildings are from the single-family homes. In addition to those standards that we added specifically for Fort Thomas Avenue, there are other standards that apply to all the parcels in the city that are zoned R3 and R5. So for example, you can't have parking lots in front of the building. All accessory buildings and structures have to be in the side of the rear yard. Accessory structures have minimal setbacks from the side and rear yards that range from five feet to 10 feet, depending upon the adjacent zoning districts. These standards would prevent accessory structures from being in the front yard, much as the same as the things, the standards that we have for the overlay district for single-family and two-family. But they don't address attached garages or enclosed porches, which some community members think should be regulated, what we heard in the public hearing. So for example, if someone wanted to add, you know, tear out part of that building and add an attached garage, that would not be regulated by these standards. So questions for you to consider. Should we retain the Fort Thomas Avenue district? Should we change the applicability? So for example, only have it applied in construction instead of renovations and new construction? Should we modify any of the regulations? Or should we modify any of the regulations that are applicable to R3 properties along the avenue? Any other topics that you might want to discuss? And now I'm going to throw one more thing out at you. So we could even, if Tim concurs, add a restriction in the R3 district that says, if an R3 property is converted to a single-family home, meaning one of those R3 properties is torn down and a single-family home put back in it or a two-family home put back there, because both of those are permitted uses in the R3 district, they would have to comply with the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay standards. So that would be a text amendment in the R3 district versus placing the overlay on top of them. So Tim is okay with that. Then that would also meet with the other concerns that we heard at the public hearing, which is if one of these buildings is torn down and created and turned into a single-family, they wouldn't have to comply with the overlay district, but we would. So that's another way of addressing some of the things we heard at the public hearing. And that would be, again, a text amendment, not a pass amendment.
I highly agree with that. The only other thing I was thinking about in the R3 is the garages. That was a good point, because if they wanted to add a garage, could they add it to face the front because the rest of them can't? So that would be something I would think that maybe we could change.
We certainly could do that, and most of them were sitting in a situation where they couldn't add it in front of it, but that doesn't mean you just go back.
You could build it over the driveway.
Yes, I could build it over the driveway. I could tear out a part of it. I mean, there are any, any number of ways that that happens. So we could add that as a text amendment as well, saying attached garages, you know, may not face Fort Thomas Avenue.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, the restrictions we had on the garages for the single-family or the two-family, I mean, if you have a detached garage or a carport or any of those same things, essentially, even though they may not be applicable to the photo that you have there necessarily, I don't see why, why you would not have those for the R3 where you would have it for the other ones.
Well, keep in mind, if it's a carport that's detached, then it's handled because it can't be, it can't be in front of the building.
Right, but even if you had an R3, you simply put a carport in the driveway, they were not allowing, are we allowing that in the single-family or are we not allowing it?
In the single-family, look at your side.
Not we allow carport.
But did you say to be not in front of the house?
Correct.
Correct.
So I mean, I guess from just a consistency standpoint, I don't see why we wouldn't just apply the same standards to the R3.
And again, if it's attached, it's not addressed, but if it's detached, it is because the current R3 standards for all R3 properties, say accessory structures, have to be in the side of the rear.
I understand.
So, but if they attach it, it is a whole different bargain. So we could certainly add regulations that deal with that as well.
I have another question. So the windows or the front porches, I think all those buildings, they don't have any porches that you couldn't close, they can't, but then I'm...
Well, some of them have stoops that could potentially end up with a porch that's in place.
I mean, you could construct a screen porch in front of it.
Or, or you could construct one.
And I do know there's some kind of near Grand and South Fort Thomas that have, they have a half, like an apartment below and then above is a deck. So they could right now screen that in as it's...
That's correct.
Because it faces.
Because it, yes. So there are situations where that particular example does not, there are certainly other ones.
Right.
That's, you know, and they're mostly three families, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Have exactly what you're just, they have a front porch that can be screened in.
Yeah.
They, some of them even have a side porch that can be screened in. So we certainly could add that text to those standards and say, no carport, no carports, no front-facing garages, no screened-in porches.
Right.
You know, no.
Essentially, it would be consistent.
The same, correct.
And I do agree with the discussion you had about if one of those R3s were torn down, even in an R3 district, and it is converted to a single-family residential, then, then it all, of course, we're making it consistent and kind of maybe being to the good point, but, you know, that there wasn't, there's not an "out," essentially.
Yeah. All right, so, but why on hearing, is you want to retain the district?
Yes, because that was the main concern that people had before this all started. They wanted to keep Fort Thomas looking the way Fort Thomas looks. By adding different, the garages in the front, it's oriented in, that is not the look.
Well, the question that was brought up was who on the avenue suggested that? Were the people that lived on the avenue that want...
Oh, that was a question.
Well, and I think the reality was, was nobody that lived on the avenue. I thought it interesting, you know, that we had some comments against it from people who actually were on the avenue, you know, and it's apparent it took a direct letter to them telling them that their property was going to be rezoned of some form or fashion to get them to the meeting, but, you know, I thought, you know, we've heard all along that everybody wants this and having, you know, just, just like the historic district we were talking about before, people who are in it say, hey, don't add some regulations to my property, but I do think it's appropriate.
All right, in terms of change in applicability, should it apply as it's currently drafted or just to new construction?
New construction. If somebody tears it down, rebuilds, all of that, but existing homeowners or property owners should go do a very long repotment.
So I thought we were, so were we talking about the screening in of the porches and things like that, or?
We could keep that in there, but...
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering what we're, what we're speaking of, when we're talking about, you know, I don't think we're just talking about tear a property down and build something new.
I, yeah, you certainly could go in that direction. However, if the, if the idea is to maintain the consistency along the avenue or the character along the avenue, certainly things could happen to an existing home that would change that character.
And I guess, there's people that came and, I'm not trying to say anything against anybody, but when they bought that house, didn't they buy it for a character? I mean, I would think most people do, that's why you buy an old home. I mean, I don't, am I missing something?
I don't think we can infer like what someone's thinking about it.
No, but I mean, if you buy something that is in a historic town with a character that way...
But without restrictions on it, so...
But there's always restrictions in everything.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is anybody that bought it up until, you know, we put our overlay in place, they didn't have these restrictions on it. So, so I guess, one of the questions I had, so this goes to the, it's just an administrative again, so property owner wants to make an alteration, a substantial alteration, or new construction, and they go to the design review board. Besides what's strictly in the ordinance itself, there's really, I mean, what interpretation is the designer report making?
So it would go to Kevin or Mark, and if it complies with everything, it never goes to the design review board. It only goes to the design review board if they want to somehow deviate from it. So for example, they, they don't want to need the front setback, or that would actually go to the BCA, or to the board adjustment. They had something extenuating on their property, for example, about the roof design, then the design review board would have an opportunity to review that. That's, it is an "out" for them, for that problem, or to say, these reasons, or the proposed design that needs the intent, but doesn't need the letter, you send it to the design review board.
But like the, like the, I guess, even like the orientation of the building, something like that, that would still be into the purview of the designer review board.
If they don't be...
If they're not, if they're not facing the avenue, for whatever reason.
Right.
Or the solar panel situation or something along those lines, but...
That would be to the design review board. So for example, they wanted a side entry versus a front entry to the house, then the design review board could help them design a home that would keep the character of the Fort Thomas Avenue.
Right.
But it'll let them need their model of having a side entry, for example.
I guess what I was, I guess what I'm, I guess trying to clarify too, and maybe this is for the benefit of some of the people in the, in the audience or generally, we're not saying that all these houses are historic.
No.
And this isn't a historic overlay.
No.
So there, those types of restrictions, like the tiers there, don't necessarily apply here.
No, no, the only thing that is applying are the standards that are in code.
That are enforced.
And so I think there is a little bit of, it's difficult to think about the designer review board having two hats. They have the hat that is reviewing historic structures, which is what they traditionally do now, but through the UDO, they will have additional duties, that are nonhistoric. And it would be in this situation, hearing deviations from these standards or deviations from some of the standards of the non-residential district. So in this case, they are wearing a different hat.
Right, we're not imposing any historic, any historic design standards on any of these properties.
Correct.
But if somebody has the property to build a side garage, we're saying you can't do that facing Fort Thomas, even though they have the property available. Which, I mean, it's done probably between Highlands and... Belzandria and Woodfield that have the property to build, you know, additional side garage and stuff.
Then we have the ability to get a deviation.
Yeah, that's the only thing we could do, making up for the plan.
So yes, they can go to the design review board.
Right, and I mean, I think that, again, that's the function of the designer review board. Somebody can build an attached garage, but it fits the overall context of the property and, and the designer review board meetings are open, open meeting of the neighbor who says, oh, that's going to ruin my property value for whatever reason. I mean, there's a give and take there, so they can make an informed decision and it's not, you know, they can get relief from the, from the ordinance and it's not a, by God, this is what you have to do. So I, and again, that's, that's kind of the function of the board, that's what they're there for.
So the question remains, should it be substantial modifications or renovations and construction?
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
And I'll be interested to see over the next, you know, five, 10 years, how much, how much does actually come to play? I mean, how much, how much of a burden does it become? And I, you know, it can always be revisited down the road. I mean, if this becomes an administrative nightmare for the city and for residents and it becomes a, it's a real, you know, contentious issue, we can always revisit it. But for now, I think it's, I mean, based on feedback we've gotten, it's trying to further those goals, anyway.
I personally can't think of a lot of permits that I've had that is, you know, on scale of some of these things along the avenue. I'm trying, you know, driving up in my mind, up and down along the avenue and it's, you're not seeing a whole lot of garages and, you know, things added, even, you know, I mean, there's not been a whole lot of significant change.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that lot that's on the corner of London and Fort Thomas Avenue, the house out, I don't know if there's been any plans filed yet or anything like that. But of course, you know, if this goes through the process, that might be the first property subject to this situation, but, you know.
I had a citizen say to me over the weekend that they just saw someone enclose their porch on the avenue and how terrible, terrible it looks. So the point here, it was someone asked at our last meeting, why this just applies to the avenue and not all the houses in Fort Thomas. And I think it's because a response, we, we're told we never listen. I think we listened to the citizens on this one, came up with a group of additional regulations, but when the question was asked at the last meeting, why, why are we doing this? Yet no one in the audience came to our defense and said, well, you know, we citizens asked this. I was really disappointed by that. But the point is that the character of the Fort Thomas Avenue, we were asked to do what we can to maintain that look. And that's why these additional regulations are being considered that wouldn't apply to side streets. It's because the avenue is mostly our character and people don't necessarily go down the side streets. So I don't know if that satisfies Mr. Hopper's, our, Cropper, Mr. Cropper's question, but that was, that was the intent. It was citizens saying, we want to maintain the character of the avenue. I live on the avenue, if I want to close my porch, I'm going to have to go through the same process. If I want to build a garage on the side of my house, I would have to go through the same process. So it's, yeah, we, we're all citizens, some of these all apply to us, so, you know, it's, that was, that was the reasoning behind it.
And I will say, from when this, this whole topic originated, we had a lot longer and more restrictive list of potential regulations initially, that we pulled, pulled a lot of that back out. And it, like I said, it's, as it currently stands, it's really more of how does a structure orient itself to the street? That's the main thing, and less from a design architectural side of things.
Do we want to modify any of the regulations applicable to the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district?
Can you go through this just one more time?
Sure. So we highly regulate the front setback, and there are regulations for the placement of detached and attached garages. Will you tell you exactly what that means?
Sure, it's quick.
Okay. It's quick. Street-facing garages are prohibited, except that single-car garages with doors no wider than 12 feet, which are located in the basement, are permitted. Side-loaded garages cannot protrude beyond the wall of the habitable portion of the home, and rear-loaded garages are permitted. Detached garages have to be behind the principal structure a minimum of 10 feet from the front edge of dwelling. Does that make sense? No freestanding metal carports can be visible from Fort Thomas Avenue. Portico chairs are permitted if they are architecturally compatible. At least 80% of the roof of this principal dwelling has to be sloped, and the building orientation of the building has to face the public street. And we already talked about the porches can't be enclosed or glass or screened in, and 15% of the facade facing Fort Thomas Avenue has to have windows or entrance doors. And in terms of solar panels, they're only permitted when they're not visible to Fort Thomas Avenue.
I think just one point of clarification, so you said, I remember, you know, we had the joint meeting with council and they wanted to make sure this also applied to houses that are on a corner, you know, side street where there is a side facade that faces the avenue. How does the facade design for transparency work in the case where there's no windows on that side of the house?
So they're not going to be permitted to do that unless they go to the design review board. And that was a discussion that we had with, with council, that they were committed to that. Because there are many homes that don't have windows on the front.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the homes are on the way to the avenue.
I'm sorry, did you...
The homes are like that on the avenue that don't face the avenue, that are a corner, could be a corner a lot.
Yes. My recollection, and I don't have the number definitively, but my recollection, there were six or eight.
Well, I'm saying if the house already, if it already doesn't, and they want to renovate their house for whatever reason, and then you got to put windows on a wall that doesn't have windows in it, I don't necessarily agree with that.
But that would be an opportunity for them to...
It would, it would, I just, you know. I, I, I know a few houses where there are no windows facing the avenue now, and they really were never intended to, quote unquote, face the avenue, it just happened to be the first house on the side street.
And that was a common...
Are any of these regulations things that you can't go to the Board of Adjustment for?
I'm sorry, did you...
Are any of these regulations things that are hard pass, and you cannot go to the Board of Adjustment and get changed, if you have special conditions?
So the Board of Adjustment would handle the front setback, and the design review board would handle everything else.
Yeah.
So, no, there's nothing you can't go, and there's nothing you don't have an out for. Dave, did that answer your question about what the regulations are?
Yeah, I think so. Oh, and just, I guess, on the carport thing, so it says it can't be visible from the avenue. I'm just wondering, if it's in somebody's backyard, is that literally not applicable?
So this is what we said, because if you remember, we spent about 45 minutes talking about that. So forgive me for reading directly from here. No freestanding metal carports visible from Fort Thomas Avenue shall be permitted. Freestanding metal carports shall be located entirely behind the principal structure. For the purpose of this regulation, freestanding means not attached to the principal structure.
I understand. I guess what I'm saying is, though, but if it is completely beyond the, in the rear of the house, I guess, to me, that's far enough, I mean, I don't know what you all think, but to me, that's far enough away. I mean, if I could sit in the driveway and say, oh, I see it down there 50 feet back there, I'm okay with that, I guess, as long as it's to the rear of the house.
But Dave, you want to put a restriction that it has to be, the front of the carport has to be behind the rear line of the house, or, well, that's what we say now, don't we?
No, we just say, supposedly, it's entirely behind the principal structure, which works, which works, unless you're a corner lot. Yeah, exactly. That...
That faces Fort Thomas.
No, that faces the side street.
Yeah.
Because then you're going to have the portico share, then you're going to have the carport in the backyard, behind the principal structure, but still visible from the avenue, potentially.
I think I'd be inclined just to leave it the way we propose it, if somebody wants to put that up.
They go to the design review board.
They go to the design review board.
Well, I get that, but I understand that, but I also think if a citizen wants to put it in their backyard, I don't, you know, personally, I'm okay with that. But, again, if it goes to the design review board, and they can check the visibility from the building property owners, the building property owners can weigh in.
I mean, this is only the houses on the front, you know, I mean, it sounds like we're talking six or eight houses.
Well, no, I'm just saying, no, 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 the carport won't be any house.
Right, but I was...
I think if it's visible back to drive...
Right, you know, it just says if it's visible from the avenue, and if it's somebody's backyard, to me, that's not, to me, I think that's a little bit of overkill. If it's in the backyard, and you have it back there, and it meets all the other setback requirements, to be an accessory structure in the rear yard, you know, what if somebody has a shed back there, you know, I don't like that.
So we could change the regulation, get rid of the first sentence, which is no freestanding metal carports visible from Fort Thomas Avenue shall be permitted. We could strike that, and just say, freestanding metal carports...
That was mine, yeah.
Shall be located entirely behind the principal structure.
That was my call.
I'm with that.
Do we want to put a copy up, for the houses that are on the corners, that you don't put them, so that they're direct, direct view, whatever else from the avenue? I'm not sure.
I think the corner issue is more of a, you know, that goes to the design review board, because it's just a site-specific thing so much.
Well, we're saying it aloud.
Yeah.
If we take it out to...
There's eight houses, we think.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather have eight houses have it, and then let everybody else have it in the rear yard, and don't worry about the eight houses that may have it.
I'm not sure if you care, but I think city council is concerned about those houses, because those are highly visible.
I don't know that it came up in the context of the carport.
I don't think it did, but when we were talking about windows and everything else, it's because that's what's visible from Fort Thomas Avenue. And so, I don't get strongly one way or another.
So we want to get rid of the first sentence or not? Yes. Yes? Okay, go on.
Here, you both. I'm on to something else. We had this with Boone County, where people would buy these prefab carports that don't attach to the ground, and they would just set them up like a tent.
They blow away.
And, yeah, they blow away, and I was looking for the ductile carport to see what exactly we say. We don't, we don't say it's a permanent structure, we don't say it has a foundation. We, I just wondered if, you know, if that, if someone wanted circumvent this, they could buy one of those, and put a couple stakes in the ground.
Say it's not really a carport.
Probably had something out of that, wood carport.
The definition just said it's a roof structure, with, we had no more than 75% enclosed by walls. So I would think if someone wanted to circumvent this, they could buy one of those prefab things, and just anchor it to the ground with some spikes.
And probably use them attached to the ground.
Yeah, that's, that's the right, that's what we ended up having to define it as, is permanently attached to the ground.
Do you want me to add that to definition of carports?
I would like to not allow them to, with a temporary, or, you know, basically a tent in the backyard, or they...
Drive under.
Yeah, I think we could more definitively, definitively define the carports, so that it is...
It's all in the way that it's Murphy's.
All right, so we'll put a foundation, we'll find a program for the foundation. Okay.
Keep someone from... Yeah, yeah, if they want a carport that has a permanent foundation, then they can't do a temporary thing, they just, you know, they just, yeah.
You say, you say, okay. All right, so what I heard is, we are changing the definition of carport, and we are deleting the first sentence, which says, no freestanding metal carports visible from Fort Thomas Avenue shall be permitted. That's gone. Okay. Any other changes to those regulations? No. All right. Here, we've already talked about modifying regulations applicable to R3 properties on Fort Thomas Avenue. What I heard was, make it parallel, you know, you know, get parallel garages, parallel carports, parallel portico shares, all of that's the same, and then add an additional text that says, if these properties are removed, and new single-family home or two-family home goes in, it complies with the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay. Correct? Okay. Are there any other topics we want to discuss regarding the overlay district?
I don't, I don't, I don't remember any other specific topics being brought up. I know, you know, originally, we had some discussion about the limits of the district, but I don't remember any comment or feedback about that specifically, or anything else that I remember specifically.
The only other thing I would bring up is, is several community members talked about the maintenance of the existing, of the existing R3 properties on the avenue, several community members discussed that. Unfortunately, for the most part, maintenance is outside of the UDO. So unfortunately, we can't really address that for this. All right, moving on. So at the public hearing, some community members expressed concerns about the proposed maximum front setback. As you know, this requirement was included in UDO to better align homes on the street. So the question is, should this requirement be...
What is occurring? What does it say currently for the setback?
In the current, existing ordinance or the UDO?
No, existing, there's a minimum without that.
So you have a minimum, but not a maximum?
Does it say should align with...
No, it does not. So what, the way a minimum works is, you have to be at the minimum or behind it.
Right, but isn't there somewhere it says that it should align with...
Not in your current ordinance, if I'm aware of it.
I mean, it talks, it talks about if the minimum is front, so we've had several variances for post-7 and porches, that have to meet the average of the setback, but it's referencing the minimum. It doesn't really say you have to be within that for the maximum, for the maximum. And I think that's why we wanted to change the language, to create consistency on most streets, and there's certainly some that it's really not terribly applicable, but, you know, the average street in Fort Thomas is a line of houses that are relatively consistent, and you want to try and create that consistency.
Right. I guess I just had, I guess I just had a couple questions. So, how does this apply, like, to a flaglot situation?
I, I would assume that it wouldn't apply, but it applies to all parcels, right?
So if it's currently drafted, it applies to all of parcels in the R1B and the R1C. You certainly could add a statement that says it's not applicable to flaglots, which we've done in other situations.
So I guess that's a question. And I guess the other part was, did we do any kind of analysis to establish that seven-foot dimension? I mean, was there a basis for that?
So we looked at trying to provide a little bit of wiggle room, you know, the limits in the R3, when we're talking about the front setback, we say three feet, you know, we're, we are looking at, you know, here in title line along the avenue. And so the seven feet was a way to provide a little bit of wiggle room, and you'll also notice that it's a minimum front setback plus seven feet, or the abiding maximum. So for, and which is defined as, the home next door is having a maximum that is more than the average plus seven. So potentially, if the homes are already out of the line, you could be as far back...
Be as back as your neighbor.
As your neighbor.
Right. I just wonder where the seven foot came from, basically.
It came from, you know, we had these discussions, there was, do we, do we just have an absolute maximum, you know, that's very tight, you know, like within three feet? And as we talked about it, you were, there seemed to be a feeling that you wanted a little bit of wiggle room, and so that's where that seven feet came from, and it's things talking about getting, being not quite as dogmatic as it are in other situations.
And they would still have the opportunity to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, always.
If, if they couldn't, if they're more than the maximum, perhaps more minimum.
Right. If there's something, you know, standing waiting about the property, there's a sewer line, there's a big tree, there's, you know, any number of reasons.
I mean, really, the character of the street, the character of the street, all the houses aren't precisely lined up, that would seem to be...
I get it, I get it, I just, like I said, it, you know, obviously predominantly, the Board of Adjustment is to give you relief for the minimum setback, you know, they haven't encountered the maximum setback issue, I presume, generally, right?
I, I think there was one house that prompted this, that was recently built, that kind of stirred the pot here, is what, where it came from. No, I'm just saying, in terms of, with this, I assume this won't create a burden on the Board of Adjustment, where you all of a sudden, you're going to have all these people saying, hey, I want 30 foot setback, not 20, or whatever the case is.
Because that was, you know, part of this whole process for the UDO, is to help, you know, diminish those variances by making the ordinance conform to the built environment, so we don't want to, we don't want to go in the other, the other direction, you know.
You know, keep in mind, we've had lots of discussions about this being a living document. And this is not really that it's engraved in stone and never going to be changed. So, you know, as you said about the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay, if it starts to, I thought, said it can be changed, if this, if it starts creating lots of...
I, like I said, I was just curious about the rationale of the seven versus eight or 10 or six or whatever, you know.
So the seven, really, I guess, if you didn't want to be too tight, but the seven feet gives a little bit of wiggle room, but it's still, if you're walking down the street, you still have to be substantially aligned. Whereas if you get to 10 feet or 15 feet, it's much wider.
Yeah. When you have a house that's 25, 30 feet tall, seven feet isn't going to be in order to be, I mean, I'm just thinking of my own subdivision, I think the majority of the houses, I think, but there is variance of seven feet throughout the subdivision, I guess, is what I'm saying, but there aren't very many that are 20, 30 feet difference, but there are some that are probably 10, 10 feet difference, anyway.
Colistacks are in? I mean, you've got colistacks in houses that are almost always farther away than that. They can't be...
You don't have a lot of them.
Well, I think the colistacks, they might seem further back, but a lot of times, your radius associated with the cul-de-sac and the right-of-way is further back, kind of tends to, you know, you have a large radius, and those houses feel further back than they probably actually are. They're probably more in accordance with the rest of the house, but, you know, you've got a cul-de-sac that has a, already a diameter to it, that exceeds what the, you know, the plane of the street is, and then you got a right-of-way, and then you're sticking that house back there. So I would say that generally, generically, although they feel further back, they're probably relatively close. I mean, when builders build houses, you know, that's more cost, when they got to go back beyond the setback, they're paying more cost for driveway and things of that nature, so they generally like to keep them at the minimum setback.
Right.
You know, I could, you know, I could, I don't think, you couldn't go our house any closer, a lot closer than a cul-de-sac.
I mean, I think the case, the kind of case scenario where I'm thinking about this most often, is where you have a view to the rear, in your rear lot, you have a view of downtown or the river, or whatever the case might be, and you want to, you want to maximize the view, you don't really care about your friends on the front side. So if you push your house to where you get the best view, that's what you're going to do. You know.
Does that inhibit, you know, if you have a line of houses, could you argue that that inhibits everybody else's view, or at least adjoining properties? And if you have a situation where it is an infill lot, you know, versus a, you know, more of a R1AA out there in the, overlooking the river, that in all reality, the houses are a lot further apart, and probably not going to have that same feel, and I think the Board of Adjustment would be more than willing to push it back.
Yeah.
I'm okay with leaving it like you got it.
I mean, I'm okay, I'm okay with the concept of it, I just, I just wish we had some rationals. Seven feet is based on the need of something, or there was some rational basis behind it.
Average distance of the, of the length of the front porch on, on these houses. All stats don't play in the end yet. Seven feet is far. I think we've got, I think we need a number, and...
Oh, I think we need a number, too, I, I just, you know, does 10 feet or 8 feet make a difference, really? I don't know.
Again, it can all be adjusted by the Board of Adjustment, if somebody comes in and wants 2 feet difference, I can't imagine there being a problem, but they still have to go.
Yeah. I guess, you know, like I said, I'm okay with it.
Do we want to add clarifying language that doesn't apply to flaglots?
Yes. And I guess Kevin, just real quick on the cul-de-sac situation, so how is the front setback set? Is it set off, I mean, if the, if the right-of-way's a radius in the front?
It's set off the property line. So, well, I know, but I was saying, if that front property line is on a radius, not a straight line, is it the minimum tangent to the radius that sets the back? Or is it just a concentric circle that's offset back?
On flats, it's usually, it usually shows up, if they show it on the flat, they show it as a...
Yeah, you're right. It shows it as a mark, and then, that's your minimum closest point.
Right, so your... So if you want a seven-foot setback, is it a radius point that's seven, that's a diameter, you're kicking back that circumference, or not circumference, the radius, seven?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, so. So if you wanted to build a house where the front facade is an arc, you could do that, as long as it met the setback.
Due to the development of, of, of street, or farther back in seven feet, or...
Well, there's a seven feet difference between...
Not seven feet minimum, man.
Not seven feet minimum, it's...
They're in there.
If there's a setback of 20 feet, then you could go back to 27.
Some of it might have been a configuration on a lot, you know, there's, I think someone would probably technically consider flaglots back there.
Yeah, back in the...
Back to the one, and I think that's, there was a couple of flaglots back there.
All right, we're going to keep your lay notes, and specifically start this and plot flaglots. Any other topics from the public hearing that you want to discuss? Any other topics from the public hearing that you wanna discuss?
I didn't really see anything in the meeting minutes, or from what I recall, that really, as far as significant discussion and questions that were outside of. I was just trying to recall real quick, I'm ahead, the mural situation. How do we leave the murals?
As I recall, we left it with not really having a whole lot of discussion about it, just a simple statement that.
And we don't want them.
Yes, as you were calling, we all didn't want them. As, you know, the council met, they felt that it would be appropriate to have them as long as they were standards. And Tim, if you wanted to weigh in on that.
I think that's all I care, we talked about, just the, whether you have them or not, the ability to say that you're allowing them, but you're controlling standards, you can't control content, but controlling standards gives us a better leg up and try to defend and fight through it.
I was just trying to remember, so what were those standard pieces? Get the five-minute version. Actually, the planning commission didn't want them. They decided it was much easier not to have them, that the city council, I guess, put that on the agenda. So we dealt with it because the city council has to approve it. So we did, did put standards in there, and, but it was not, it was not the planning commission that put the mural.
No, I agree, right. That's what I recall.
Yeah.
I just tried to recall what they went along with, I don't think they've agreed with this after the hearing, or.
No.
They were taking it out of their.
No, I think that the intent was to regulate it, just disagree. Just to have something that they're gonna, because there's no question about how much you can regulate it, so.
But if you can't regulate content, in fact, it was Tim who said at the meeting.
We can't take additional comment at this point. I'll talk to you about it afterward.
No. So the standards are.
Sorry, there were procedures.
I was at the meeting at the UDO, open meeting, Tim, and you were not. But the fact is, he said, you're allowed to put F the police. Now, I had no idea you would open that door.
So the standards are conditionally permitted as accessory use in the central business district, which means that they would have to go to the board of design review board in order to go search for appropriateness, and then go and find the board of adjustment because it's a conditional use. The design construction installation, repair and maintenance shall not interfere with traffic or pedestrian or public safety. No part of the mural shall exceed the height or width of the structure to which it's attached. No part of the mural shall extend more than six inches from the plane of the wall to which it is tiled or painted or fixed. No part of the mural should project above the building's roof line. No mural shall be installed on any original facade of a building listed on the national register of historic places unless the mural can be detached such that it can be removed without any injury in that building. Electrical or mechanical components and changing images are prohibited. Murals are prohibited on the front facade of any building. They shall not be placed over any window or opening or building opening, that kind of thing. Shall not destroy or cover materially alter distinctive architectural feature of the building unless the design review board says it's okay. The finishes, the textures, the construction, all of that has to be, is attached to a historical building, has to be approved by them, and has to be preserved under certain circumstances. It shall be arranged and illuminated in a way that will produce a light intensity no greater than three-foot panels as measured at the property line for the commercial or mixed use. It has to be primarily pictorial, only ten percent of it shall have words. It's responsibility of the property owner or the owners designated to ensure that it's maintained well. If it's damaged or vandalized, it has to be repaired. They have to have a clear sealer, and when it's removed, it has to be removed in a manner that brings the building back to its original state. And then if there are standards for the application as well.
So we talked about the remove, convert it back to its original state. If somebody, say somebody just paints a mural, some, just some geometric design, you know, one of these barn quilts kind of situation.
Yeah.
And they decide to change it the next year, do they have to go back and? Do they, they don't have to go back and put it back to the original piece job of their part, or when they painted it the last time, do they, they can just?
You have to be anything content, in my mind, and so they can change the content of it out if it became dilapidated, and then if one, they would either need to paint back to its original state, touch it up appropriately, or they could go through the side.
Yeah, so they could go to it, that's what I'm saying. So they could revise it, but it doesn't necessarily, if they want, it doesn't necessarily, say they're painting whatever, and they choose, I don't like that painting anymore, I wanna change it to something different, they don't have to go back to the original.
No, 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 no. Basically, what it says is it has to be a high-quality exterior painting guaranteed by the manufacturer the last ten years.
But in terms of the appearance, they could do whatever, they could change it to something different.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, whatever that might be.
But if it's a different mural, they would have to go back to the.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking. So if they change, say the barn quilt is green and blue, and they change it to purple and orange.
They get to go back to the.
They have to go back to the process.
They get to go back to the process.
Just because they changed the color?
Just because they changed the color.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But if they, for example, wanted to completely remove it, they don't necessarily have to go back to the original color. However, because it's in the historic district, if they don't go back to their original color, they're going to go back and find the design review board in order to have it approved. It wouldn't be a conditional use at that point, it would just be a certificate of appropriateness review. Would you agree?
That's not right.
Yeah.
But any other, any other wall that you've painted in the historic district, do you have to go back to the original color?
I mean, if you didn't go back to the original color, you'd have to go to the design review board, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the designer review board had given us some latitude for some things, and, but something like that, it would go back to them. There's.
Part of the paint color.
Yes.
So anybody that paints anything in the CBD?
Well, not anything. So there was, once again, there was, there's some latitude in the design guidelines for us administratively, and we approached the designer review board relatively recently for, you know, normal things like a door. You know, if it's in fitting with what is there, go ahead and approve it. You know, we don't, you know, if it's a, if it's a stark difference, a pink door or something like that, maybe we take it from the designer review board. But if it's in fitting with that, the designer review board granted us some, there's latitude in the language, there's a lot of latitude in the language, actually.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at, that's what I'm getting at. So if somebody paints a pink flower and decides to change it to a yellow flower, can Kevin say, that's a flower, doesn't matter what color it is? Or does that have to go to the designer review board?
Because it's a mural, or because it's.
Well, who defines what's a mural, what is it again? That's, that's the thing. I paint a blue triangle or a green circle, is that a mural?
So it's also, define our terms will be that.
Okay.
So it's in the central business district, at that ordinance, it's currently drafted. And again, keep in mind that that is all in chapter thirty-six of the ordinances. The designer review board is only looking at things that are visible from four Thomas Avenue.
Right.
From the right of way.
Yeah.
From the right of way. So, you know, not necessarily, if they put a mural on the back of a building that is in some way not visible from a right-of-way, then they would not need to prove appropriateness, but it would still be a conditional use. Does that make sense?
Conditional use. Well, we have the board of adjustment, but.
Yes.
Conditional use for a mural?
Yes. It was, it is that conditional.
So what kind of, what kind of relief would they grant?
They're not granting relief in that situation, they're looking at it as a conditional.
But is the use related, related to the occupancy of what the property is?
No, it's used in and of itself as the ordinance is currently drafted.
I mean, Tim, do you think that a mural could be classified as a use if you're not generating any income from it or anything else?
Generally, I'd never thought about it being on the back of it and being a conditional use as.
It's a positive accessory.
If the midway one is.
I actually don't want to say if you're not generating any income from it.
But it uses, necessarily have to generate income, a single family.
Well, if it doesn't have any function.
It does have a function. It is beautifying the building, versus, that's just a function, as initially.
You could say anything, it's beautifying the building, but it does apparently a use.
And the ordinance is drafted in.
I know, it's drafted, I've been saying that it's drafted that way. I'm, I guess I'm just asking it from a legal standpoint, if somebody wants to paint something on the back of their thing, and you say, I gotta go to board of adjustment, the board of adjustment's gonna say, what are we, what are we doing? What is the board of adjustment doing? As a use? You're not changing the use, it's a single family, and I'm meeting all the setbacks, and I'm doing all this stuff, but I wanna paint this picture on the back of my house or back of my building.
But it would still be interpreting the use based upon that language provided.
But I'm just saying, from a board of adjustment standpoint, is there any other examples of that process? I mean, I can see the designer review board, because they're, you know, the board of adjustment's not a design. They don't have expertise in that. That's what I'm saying, is, you know, from a board of adjustment standpoint, it just seems like you're on a slippery slope with the board of adjustment.
Instead of pub, wanting to paint something on the back, logo, create a logo. Such, your neighbor's gonna look at that. You want them to do that, you could see it from.
Oh, I'm not saying from a design standpoint, I'm just saying from, if somebody, you need to go to the board of.
That's why I don't like murals. It's gonna be on the backside.
Well, somebody can paint, somebody can paint a picture on the back of their house now.
Well, yeah, but I say, don't let. Don't let it start to.
I can't pass that, though, again, I think the city council has said they won't allow them.
That's why we didn't want to get.
How do we restrict?
We could talk about this later. Yeah, I mean, that's why we decided it was better not to have, but we're stuck having to regulate them. I think we've got a good set of regulations. Our legal council said he thinks it's defensible. But, I mean, we could talk about this for weeks, there are all kinds of little nuances that we could get into. I mean, I'm fine with the regulations, as far as restrictions and all that stuff, it's just the whole board of adjustment, the use, the conditional use part of it is what I have.
We constructed.
Is this only in the, is this only in the CBD?
Yes, yes, yeah. We constructed.
So if you're outside of the CBD, you can still paint whatever you wanna paint?
If you're outside the central business district, then it is not classified as a conditional use, and you would not have to go through this process, which, you know, does leave some interesting situations if someone wants to paint a mural in.
Anywhere else.
I pass a large skeleton on Highland Avenue about every day. Then I look at it, and I'm thinking, why is that there?
Is that a use? Do you make money off that?
Well, skeleton, no. Now, if you've got advertising for somebody on.
It's Instagram.
It shouldn't be there.
Year-round, it shouldn't be there, year-round. Let's put that, it shouldn't be there, year-round.
This seems like if you dress up for.
Yes, that's what.
If you're around decorated.
I know, that's what.
It's an accessory structure.
That should be in the fridge, right?
Yeah, exactly.
We're way out there.
Let's circle back.
We're constructing this, we have a mural, murals in a way to give some comfort to council, and, yes, here we are. Tim, do you want to discuss any other issues today?
I guess, you know, my, my just luck in the future is, this might be worth some further investigation, as far as just the process of what we need, but how do you regulate? I don't have a problem with what we regulate, it's just the whole process of the board of adjustment.
I paint my brush. I paint a picture on my brush.
Yeah, I mean, I could do a part of the APA, just if there's. But this has come up as a topic for that in particular.
All right, anything else? Okay. All right, so the planning commission will be discussing tonight, for them not to make a recommendation. Intendedly, it's scheduled for a first reading on November eighteenth, and then again, tentatively, for a second reading on the sixteenth of December. Those dates are tentative and may change. So at this point, I'll turn it back.
So included in the packet this evening was a draft, finding of facts, and the general recommendation for council. Has anyone had the opportunity to review that? Does anyone have any, I guess, question or comment about the content?
I didn't quite understand the last page. We got four general recommendations. Did you just, did you view what each one of those means?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So the last page are some suggested recommendations. The first one, you know, basically says that you're recommending adoption as it's currently drafted. The second one says that you're recommending recommendation with the following revisions, and those would be the revisions that we discussed tonight. The third one said that you are happy with the language, but you're not happy with the findings of fact, and you wanna change those. The fourth one says that you want to change the findings of fact, and you want to make changes to the ordinance.
So the changes that we've recommended this evening, do we need to include that in the recommendation?
Yes.
That would be the second one.
If I may, yes, number two, actually, two, two, the dates of one and two, the dates are actually, I think we got the wrong version here. In number one, it's August twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-four, and number two is also, it's where there's a blank, that's also August twenty-eighth.
We're looking at the recommendations on the last page, right?
I was looking at the first page, two, two, on the very first page, number two, one and two, the dates on there, they're noted. The one, the date in number one is actually August twenty-eighth and not the thirtieth, and in number two, where there's a blank, that is August twenty-eighth. And we did discuss, and I wanna confirm, confirm again with Tim, we did discuss that whoever, if you're considering a motion, and you are choosing to do so, to read this in its entirety?
Yes. And notes.
So take a drink of water.
But, so the dates that are in the, in the last page in the recommendations, that August twenty-eighth date on the, the last page, those are accurate.
Those are correct.
Yes.
Those are correct.
Yeah, this is the date on the first page, two, two, one and two.
Yes, they are.
If we want, we can recommend to council, if you take the section on your old bad document.
Yes, you could.
That's what I was saying, unless we can't, but we agree that we shouldn't have it. They might have talked about it, but we wanna tell them we prefer it this way.
What are the, are there any implications of that? If council comes back, I'm just trying to think of, if they could back in, are there any implications?
We've already done it, and they, they didn't like it. I mean, that's, that's the issue.
But what do they have to do? We sent it up with, with the murals completely out. And I think this question came on early, can they adopt parts of what we've recommended, or do they have to accept the whole thing as done, or do they have to send it back to us if they disagree with part of it?
I think they can approve, they can adopt exactly what you sent them, and then can also send it back to the board here. And I've gotta check, at least I think they can also make their own findings based upon that.
Right, so as I understand it, if the legislative buyer does not follow your recommendations, so for example, they want to put in the murals, then they would have to make their own findings of fact and conclusions of law based on the public hearing they impelled.
They would not be permitted to just, just throw it back in.
Yes. Correct. So, yes, they would have to have, they would have to. So they would have to have, they would have to supplement these findings of fact with their conclusions as to why they're recommending, why they're adopting something different than you recommended. Would you agree?
Yes.
Or they can just send it back to us and say, look at this.
Reconsider. They can reconsider. They can adopt their own version of the mural section that's somewhere between us and them actually reconsider. I mean, they can't override, they can't.
They can't change their, they can't create their own recommendation.
They make findings and then.
Oh, so back to the murals, sorry. We're only talking about the central business district, correct?
Correct, that's the only.
And to your point, that doesn't, even if we say no murals, that doesn't prohibit you or your neighbor from painting your garage and putting.
We don't have murals anywhere. Well, I mean, we can't. We don't. We can't. If we want, we can say no girls anywhere instead. Well, that's where we started.
There's a gentleman who lives on the fourth, third green of Porpencho Country Club, and he painted his house the hottest thing I've ever seen, and it has polka dots on it as well. And the darn thing they can do.
Right. You can't control that. You can't control that. You can't control.
You can't control. One man's art is another.
Right.
But that's correct.
I don't like it. I don't like it.
Unless you're. Unless you're a mirror month anyway.
Yeah.
Then you got a design review board to tell them what color you're painting.
Right, because it's a historic.
Yeah.
But nobody wants to have that put on their property.
I just think in the wood blocks, if you open it up, the murals are gonna, it's hard to do it.
I think if somebody wanted to do it now, they could drive it in now.
I was just saying.
It's like uses, you know, we say you can't have a junkyard in the city.
But that's for public safety. That's different.
Well, it's the same idea. It's just doesn't fit the character of the city.
You're not legislating the character of the country, you're doing it for public safety.
You can't do it in a cemetery.
For public safety. It's not the appearance.
The appearance is saying it's.
Are we ready to make?
Yeah, I think so.
A motion? So in terms of.
Hold on just a second, I guess. So we have to make the finding of fact.
Right.
And so procedurally, is it better if, Dan reads that as the secretary or is it better?
You can read it, you can hear it.
Doesn't matter.
Procedurally, I think what would make sense is if you read it.
Okay.
Is that part of the motion?
Part of the motion.
Well, so I don't make the motion.
You're right.
It seems to me it's part, that's my understanding, but it seems to me it's part of the findings of fact, is that part of the motion? Would you agree?
Yes.
Probably has to.
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of why we just, we can't tie it to the just a heading, not have to read the whole thing.
Here's what I want you to do. I mean, by the way, I would like somebody to make a motion saying that you're going to make the following findings of fact regarding the U D O and recommendation to council and then read it.
You can't be against per se, that's the document.
I would be a whole lot more comfortable because at some point.
It'll be the.
Okay.
Well, if this is litigated, I'd love to have it in the record. I would like to make a motion, you can read, to recommend to City Council the adoption of the proposed Unified Development Ordinance dated 8/28. Well, aren't you gonna do the whole thing? We gotta make the motion first. I'm making the motion.
You need to include the findings of fact in your motion.
Well, that's not there yet. Questioned, dated 8/28/2024, with the additions that we've talked about tonight, to adopt that proposed Unified Development Ordinance and the proposed zoning map with the following findings of fact as read by our chairman, Dave Wormal. Are you okay with that, Tim?
I am. Anything against on that? I'll just.
So the Planning Commission of the City of Fort Thomas has applied to comprehensively update the City of Fort Thomas Kentucky zoning and subdivision regulations. The Fort Thomas Planning Commission is held at a public hearing on October 1st, 2024, which was noticed as follows. All property owners who property may be rezoned as a result of the comprehensive update of the city's zoning regulations and the city's official zoning map were mailed notices by first-class mail on August 30th.
August 28th.
Okay, sorry, August 28th, 2024. All adjacent jurisdictions were also notified by first-class mail, and those notices were mailed on.
August 28th.
August 28th. The notice for the public hearing was posted on link N K Y dot com, which is the city's official publication for public notices on September 13th, 2024. The following exhibits are attached here too, incorporated by reference, the text of the Unified Development Ordinance of U D O dated, I'm sorry, dated August 28th, 2024. The draft zoning map dated August 22nd, 2024. The presentation from C T Consultants of Redonda's Company, which was given as part of the public hearing, which occurred on October 1st, 2024. The meeting minutes from the public hearing held on October 20th, or, I'm sorry, October 1st, 2024, which contain all the statements and testimony given by those present who wish to speak during the public hearing. And the city's comprehensive plan, also entitled the Fort Thomas Community Plan, which was adopted in December of 2018. The general findings of the Planning Commission are as follows. The Commonwealth of Kentucky under K R S 201, or I'm sorry, K R S 100, or 201 and K R S 100 203 authorizes the City of Fort Thomas to enact its zoning regulations. The Commonwealth of Kentucky under K R S 100 273 authorizes the City of Fort Thomas to enact regulations for the subdivision of land. The Planning Commission followed a methodical process for the comprehensive plan update, or I'm sorry, for the comprehensive update of the city's subdivision and zoning regulations that included the following phases. This was mentioned by Lisa previously, the scoping phase from September 2021 through October 21. Phase one, which was the assessment of existing conditions that I should review and report, and that was November of 2021 through February of 2022. Phase two, which created revised regulations and a blueprint document occurred from March 2022 through December of 2023. Phase three, which formalized the ordinance amendments and the zoning map alignment occurred from January 2024 through April of 2024. And phase four, which was the ordinance and map adoption, started in May of 2024 and will extend through December of 2024. In addition, the Planning Commission held numerous meetings, which were open to the public, to discuss the comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. The dates of the meetings are as follows. During the scoping phase, it was, or I'm sorry, September 14th, 2021, and October 20th, 2021. Phase one was January 19th, 2022, and February 16th, 2022. And then for phase two, there were meetings in April 20th of 22, May 18th of 2022, July 20th of 2022, January 18th of 2023, February 15th of 2023, March 15th of 2023, April 19th of 2023, May 17th of 2023, July 19th of 2023, August 16th, 23, and September 20th of 23. The following, I'm just gonna bridge, these are all current in 2024. In phase three, there were meetings on January 17th, February 21st, March 19th, 20th, and April 17th. The Planning Commission and Fort Thomas City Council met together during the update process to consider major policy issues in the U D O on the following dates. During phase two, we had a joint meeting on June 5th of 2024. During phase three, we had a joint meeting on February 20th. Is that correct?
It should be June 5th, 2023.
Okay, yeah. Phase two during June 5th, 2023. Phase three during February 20th, 2024. And then during phase four, we had two different joint meetings with City Council. One was on June 19th, and the other one was on July 31st of this year. City Council also had work sessions to discuss policy considerations in the U D O. The work sessions were held during phase four, and those work sessions took place on May 14th and June 5th of this year, 2024. The city sponsored community engagement sessions during both phases two and three that included both morning and evening sessions. Those sessions were advertised on the city's website, as well as the city's social media channels. Those sessions took place, and then these, I'll abridge these in 2023 and then in 2024. So in 2023, these sessions were held on January 19th, February 16th, March 23rd, April 20th, May 18th, July 18th, July 19th, August 17th, September 21st. In 2024, those work sessions occurred on January 18th, February 22nd, March 21st, and June 20th. The Planning Commission also conducted its public hearing as required by K R S 100-211 on October 1st, 2024. The public hearing was noticed as indicated in the general information session repeated previously. The City of Fort Thomas updated its comprehensive plan in December of 2018, also entitled the Fort Thomas Community Plan. The Planning Commission acknowledged that per K R S 100-197, the commission should have completed a review of the comprehensive plan during December of 2023, which did not occur at the time. Nonetheless, the community plan is adopted as the comprehensive plan for the City of Fort Thomas, and as such, must be considered when evaluating the zoning map revisions per K R S 100-213. That all attending the public hearing on October 1st were given the opportunity to be heard on the proposed comprehensive update of the zoning and subdivision regulations and the zoning map. And that the testimony provided at the public hearing was heard and considered by the Planning Commission in making its recommendation. The substantial finding to those changes of the zoning regulations, the Fort Thomas Planning Commission finds as follows. Thanks, Jerry. The city's comprehensive plan recommends in part three to achieving the vision that the city zoning ordinance should be updated. The proposed changes to the development standards for the R 1 B and R 1 C districts agree with the city comprehensive plan specifically the objective of promoting continued sensitive neighborhood investment, particularly the objectives and recommendations of L 2.2, L 2.21, and L 2.23. Can you summarize what those are real quick?
Yeah. And essentially, they were sensitive investments.
Okay. The inclusion of specific standards for multifamily developments that require, sorry, let me repeat that. The inclusion of specific standards for multifamily developments that require multifamily developments to address Fort Thomas Avenue moves the city towards the comprehensive plan goal of enhancing quality of life by promoting neighborhoods and business districts that foster walking, biking, and social interaction and a sense of community, which are objectives L 1 and L 1.2 in the comprehensive plan. Requiring multifamily developments during Fort Thomas Avenue to be visually and physically connected to Fort Thomas Avenue fosters that walking, social interaction, and sense of community. That permitting two-family dwellings as a restricted. Close existing. Oh, I'm sorry. That permitting existing two-family dwellings as a restricted use in a specified residential zoning district allows for investment in these existing dwellings, which furthers the community plan goal L 2 of maintaining and improving housing stock in our neighborhoods, but does not permit an increase in the number of two-family dwellings in existing neighborhoods. The inclusion of residential contextual standards, which govern the construction of new family detached, new single-family detached dwellings in the single-family residential districts to ensure compatibility with the character of existing neighborhoods is in agreement with the comprehensive goals and objectives that follow. And this is related to the maximum setback, correct? The residential contextual standard?
Those are, those are the ones that are actually within, that apply to all single families.
Okay. Maintaining and improving our housing stock in neighborhoods, promoting, I'm sorry, promoting the continued neighborhood investments, renovation and rehabilitation of homes, along with compatible additions and new infill construction, and other improvements that help neighborhoods retain their viability and desirability, ensuring that new housing is compatible with the character of the surrounding area. Substantial findings related to the zoning map amendments in the Fort Thomas Planning Commission finds as follows. The city's comprehensive plan recommends in part three achieving the vision that the zoning map be updated. K R S 100-213 states that the zoning district change can only be granted if the Planning Commission finds one of the following. If the proposal is in agreement with the community's comprehensive plan under K R S 100-213, part one, or if there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature in the area involved that were not anticipated by the comprehensive plan, and that have been substantially altered the basic character of the area under K R S 100-213, part 1B, or if the existing zoning of the property is inappropriate and the proposed zoning is appropriate under K R S 100-213, part 1A. The creation of the R 1 Town Center Zoning District with the proposed reductions in the development standards is in agreement with the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the goal of L 2, maintain and improve our housing stock in neighborhoods, and L 2.2, as well as the recommendation L 2.2.3, which states to update the residential district zoning regulations to better suit existing development patterns in the various neighborhoods, for example, lot size, front setback from the street, with a depth of side yards, and to reduce the administrative burden of reviewing those variances. The proposed revisions to the central business district, which includes creation of subzoning districts that are sensitive to the existing built environment and stricter development standards, is in substantial agreement with the strategies in the comprehensive plan for the midway and the town center area, especially Midway Strategy 2, which is M W 2 in the plan, and the Town Center Strategy 1, T C 1. Both of these strategies call for preserving and enhancing the traditional Main Street character, primarily with two to three-story buildings close to the sidewalk, including storefronts with housing or offices on the upper floors. By reducing the maximum permitted height in the central business district and limiting the number of stories to two or two and a half stories, and including prescriptive development standards, the amended central business district begins to realize the strategies that were outlined in T C 1 and M W 2. The comprehensive plan does not provide any specific land use recommendations for invernous. Therefore, the commission cannot make findings of agreement with the comprehensive plan for the newly created traditional business district, which is the zoning district proposed in the U D O for invernous. However, the existing zoning classifications of general commercial for invernous is inappropriate because the permitted land uses and the development standards in the general commercial district do not reinforce the existing built environment. The proposed traditional business district is appropriate because the permitted uses are tailored to the neighborhood commercial nature of invernous, and the proposed development standards are designed to ensure that the redevelopment of underutilized parcels is in keeping with existing development. Along Alexandria Pike, there are currently four zoning districts with different permitted uses and different development standards, which results in an assortment of permitted uses and development standards that reduces development that is lacking in cohesion. As a result, the diversity of the zoning districts is inappropriate, and the establishment of the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district is a more appropriate zoning classification. is more appropriate, is a more appropriate zoning classification since the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district is a place to space zoning district with permitted uses and development standards that are specific to Alexandria Pike and is tailored to take into account the varying lot configurations, the topography and the constraints that exist along Alexandria Pike. As envisioned in the future, as envisioned in the future land use plan map in the comprehensive plan, the neighborhood commercial and office districts will be used in non-residential locations in the city with a more suburban character. The permitted uses and development standards that are in the neighborhood commercial office district reflect the suburban character. Therefore, the neighborhood commercial office district is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. The Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district is intended to protect the traditional development pattern and the neighborhood character of the residential areas along Fort Thomas Avenue since the charming traditional character of the homes on Fort Thomas Avenue is a defining characteristic of the city of Fort Thomas. The city's comprehensive plan in the land use recommendations recognizes that ensuring that new housing is compatible with the character of the surrounding area is vitally important to the, to the city. The comprehensive plan also recognizes the importance of encouraging sensitive renovations of older homes as the way to return, to retain the original character of Fort Thomas neighborhoods. The purpose of the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district aligns with these goals and the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. By placing the central business district, local historic district in the unified development ordinance through the formation of a central business, central business district historic overlay district, the city is enforcing appropriate state and local legislation for the designation and the protection of historic properties, which is a recommendation in the comprehensive plan. Creation of the central business district historic overlay district also fosters investments that retain our history, our cultural heritage and our distinct character, which is also a goal in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the establishment of the central business district historic overlay district is in agreement with the city's comprehensive plan. Enhancing the quality of life in Fort Thomas is the first goal in chapter two point one, land use of the comprehensive plan. One of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan is to address this goal is to increase local efforts to preserve and protect historic sites and properties in Fort Thomas. The establishment of the Tower Park Historic Overlay District agrees with this recommendation in the comprehensive plan. Currently, exterior alterations to these historic homes are regulated and reviewed differently depending on the location of the historic home within Tower Park, which is a result of different codes, covenants, restrictions and city ordinances that govern the proposed changes to the exterior homes of, to the exterior of homes in Tower Park. The creation of a Tower, of the Tower Park Historic Overlay District will bring consistency of regulation and review processes, which is a compelling reason to create the Tower Park Historic Overlay District. In conclusion, based on the evidence in the record, which consists of the exhibits in the prior section, the planning commission affirms that these findings of fact and concludes that the proposed unified development ordinance and the accompanying zoning map are fundamentally in agreement with the, with the city's comprehensive plan. And in those instances where agreement is not established in the finding of facts, that the existing zoning classification given to a property is inappropriate and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. Therefore, the planning commission respects, respectfully recommends that the board of council recommends to the board of council as follows to adopt the proposed unified development ordinance dated August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four and the proposed zoning map dated August twenty, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four with the following revisions, which we discussed this evening.
The only one that's that's not clear is the issue of those. Do you watch recommend them or not?
How do we want to do?
I will have to revision.
I will address my motion. This is still my motion.
So.
To eliminate the mural section of the zoning ordinance. To recommend to the city council to eliminate the mural section of these own moments because we think it will be very difficult to administer.
I second Jerry's motion.
Do we want to make sure we add, do we need to add those corrections specifically? I think we should state them.
Yes, you want to summarize the revisions?
Certainly. So that we modify the, we keep the industry as it is. Some changes there. For the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District, that we modify the language for carports to take out the person that's in that subsection. In terms of the R three standards, that we modify them such that they are parallel with the standards for in Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District specifically, the language dealing with attached garages and carports and for co-shooters. And that we also add a section that states that if a R three property is torn down and a new single-family or two-family dwelling is constructed, that it would comply with the standards in Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District. Can you make sure there's nothing else? Oh, and that, and then for the maximum front said that applies in the R one B and the R one C, that we specifically state that it does not apply to flat lots. Can you make sure there's nothing else?
Is there a definition of carport?
That we actually change the definition of carport to say it has to have a foundation. So that was the other one. I get it as well. Thank you. Thank you.
I second Jerry's motion with the findings of fact read by Dave Wornall and with the changes to the U D O as just outlined by Alisa.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So ordered, the recommendation will be passed on to the board of council.
If I may, the next item on the agenda, I wanted to check everybody's panel but for instead of next month, regular council meeting, if we could hold it on the thirteenth, which is the Wednesday before. Wanted to see if you're all over that.
The regular.
Right, instead of the regular, I'm sorry, regular planning position meeting, if we could hold it on the thirteenth. And the main rationale for that is to kind of streamline and keep the council on pace for approvals for the council meeting on the eighteenth and the of November. So if we had a regular council meeting, it would kind of push back all of the approvals for council or their decision.
That's November thirteenth is when you want to have it.
Yes.
Is that going to be in lieu of our normal meeting or is it going to be an addition?
That's the, it would be a special meeting, so it would be technically solely for that. I'm not sure if we can advertise it in a manner that would include anything else that comes up in the meantime.
So and right now we would still have our regular meeting.
Possibly. I hit a little bit.
No, I cannot manage it.
I'm unavailable on the thirteenth.
Is there anything else that week? I mean, we could do like Tuesday or Thursday, twelve, thirteen, fourteenth. I don't know where we can get. The only reason I said Wednesday, we obviously just had our public hearing on Tuesday. So the only reason I'm saying the Wednesday is just consistency, but we could do a special meeting on any day that week, you know, preferably a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if we can get a form.
I'm available on the Thursday, not on Tuesday or on Saturday. You may not need me. You may pay him if he got four.
Somebody's going to have to make a motion to adjourn. Thursday. Larry?
I think so. I can't think of anything right now on the head.
Thursday, fourteenth should work for me as well.
But it's, but the agenda item is just approval of minutes.
Right, I think so unless, once again, I'd have to look at technicalities and see if we can add, you know, change the meeting date, but generally it's probably a special meeting that is very, very restrictive. So I would like to get, I don't know if we need a formal motion for that, but.
Yeah, I guess.
It would be great if we could get that at six thirty, I think. Thursday, fourteenth at six thirty.
I move for a special meeting of our planning commission on November fourteenth at six thirty, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. And we have a motion and a second to set a special meeting of the Fort Thomas Planning Commission, November fourteenth at six thirty P M, city council, or city building. All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Anything else?
I guess just one last question. So this will be a typical per reading, second reading. Is that correct?
I mean, if, if the, it's up to council, but that's the projection, you know, if everything goes, goes smoothly, that they would read it on the eighteenth as a first reading and then December, however the meeting date is for a second.
So for those in the audience, if you're interested in attending any of the city council meetings, there'll be, there'll be the dates. And, you know, city council could take the action that they wish to take.
Definitely November eighteenth and then the other one is December sixth. I move to adjourn our meeting.
Second. Tim has made a motion to adjourn and we have a second from Larry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you to everybody that participated this evening and for the past three years in the Bronx.
I can't sit in the Bronx.